Yeah, so you gotta do that.
And for your soul to be so important in this room all at once. Yes. That's why I was prepared to bring you something more. Because I'm a great student.
Yeah. Yeah, the split room.
I meant to ask you. I just, what are you doing here? I need fifty more dollars for that chair. Okay. Are you fucking kidding me? Yes. I know the last one. I know the day old.
So your teachers, okay, so our grade levels on the left. Yeah. Yeah. Cinema.
Yeah? Oh, yeah, we're on credits, so.
This is the second, second, second summer for all of us. And he's a nice guy. He's from, I think he was like, project. Fun to meet him. So many things I have to like happen.
The meeting of the board's report of education. This is a meeting not public for the purpose of conducting school districts business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 11. If you would like to speak at public comment, comment cards are right outside the door there where you came in. Please fill out a card or put it in the appropriate basket and those will be picked up prior, or right after the superintendent's report. And now, if you would please stand and join Girl Scouts Group A112 and then give us the Pledge of Allegiance.
Audience attention, please stand. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard honor the flag. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard dismiss.
Thank you very much. It's kind of fun to have a member here. At the end of the year, it should be a little. Yeah, so if you'd like to turn around and say your name, we're ready here.
Hi, Ruby. Ruby, thank you very much.
I'm Leah. Leah, thank you.
I'm Amaya.
I'm Rosie.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies. All right. And now we can welcome from Dr. Sue Gutierrez, the principal of the community's.
Well, I, uh... I did see the severe thunderstorm warning out there and I got a little nervous on the way over, but I will say that Northern Trails was once host during a, um... Winter storm warning? And I was once host when it was the board, myself, one Eagle Scout and one father. So this is much better attendance than that one. Good evening, Dr. Fosson, Dr. Schuwal, members of the school board, fellow administrators, families, students, and members of the community. Welcome to the new home of our district superintendent, the human resources office, our business office, the district technology office. This gorgeous building, which in my mind was well overdue, probably overdue when I first turned in my paperwork to become an employee in the district, was built with funding from the 2018 bond. Welcome. It is the immense force of pride that I stand before you tonight. For the past thirty-one years, I've had the pleasure of working in Forest Hills first as a teacher for nine years and then as an administrator for the past twenty-one years. Before my employment in the district, I'm also a very proud alumnus of Collins Elementary, Northern Middle School, and Northern High School. And so I am a little bit biased about our Huskies and our pack mentality. Northern Trails I-V is incredibly proud to host the first Board of Ed meeting in our new facility. Our school community in partnership with our Husky parents and community will be sharing with you some hidden members of our pack tonight whom we cherish very dearly. As a school, we believe in pack mentality, a simple concept really. It's simply a belief that every adult who works in our schools fosters a nurturing environment in which adults bring forward their personal talents so that students in our care can feel physically, emotionally safe, and a sense of belonging, in our case, in the pack, and therefore achieve their personal best potential. This evening, my students and I are eager to share with you some of our hidden champions. Each of them are here tonight. Each of them are hidden out there, not typically enjoying the spotlight, some of whom the public rarely sees up close, but impact our students on a daily basis. And we didn't bring a secretary because you all know your school secretaries. These are the folks you don't see behind the scenes. So joining me tonight, I welcome to the podium, three students, Cecilia King, Sarah Verde, and Anja Debeen. And we reached out to our exactly five hundred students in the building, believe it or not, and we asked them to tell us a little bit about the hidden champions of Northern Trails. So since tomorrow, I'll give you your introduction and then I'll turn the mic over to you because you're quite capable. As you can stand wherever you feel comfortable. In our, in our world, Husky pack mentality is a simple, simple concept. And whether you're a student or you're an adult, if you really see a team of Huskies, they have a big dog in the front. They are black, they are white, they are gray. It's very common for a Husky to have two different colored eyes. And no, a oxen. It is what it is. It's part of their breed characteristic. And we always talk about that. You bring what you've got to the table. It's not a socialist thing by any means. It's simply when you bring what you've got to your community, your community's started to place. No different than Forest Hills at March. And we are not a host to our Husky or our range of friends. We do a lot of collaborative sports and engineering activities and all kinds of things. But about two and a half years ago, Mr. Jeff, where are you at? Chadernan? Thank you. Hi, sir. Our daytime custodian looked at me about two and a half years ago in the hallway. He was having the day. He's a great guy. His wife is actually a teacher in the district as well. And he looked at me and, sorry, Jeff. And he just said, "Doesn't matter." Pretty simple question. And I was like, "Oh, my gosh." If you don't feel like you matter, like, I'm not doing my day job because without that custodial team, we have a red hot mess on our hands. And my goodness, I want you to matter because, sorry, Dr. Schuwal, we don't pay these folks enough. We never will pay these folks enough. And so that's never going to equal up. And so you better have value in the work that you do every day and I better find a way for you to feel valued. Well, it didn't take me. A teacher reached out, realized Jeff had a YouTube channel where he was showing off his artwork, quite frankly, and we made some fast connections there. So Husky pack mentality is simple. Let the adults come in, bring the talents they have, showcase those to the kids, and really find meaning by doing what I love, what I'm passionate about with my head and heart. And our kids will thrive, our kids will find their community, and our kids will thrive. So we reached out to our five hundred kids. And where does this all connect is through my tip, that we help kids feel safe, hopefully engaged, challenged, and supported. We surround our kids with good food service folks, great folks in transportation, superior interventionists, folks that are willing to do just about anything in the guy's notice. Thank you, Mrs. Norwood. Thank you, Mrs. Josephson. Get back there. And the kids are going to tell you about these folks. So kicking it on, I believe, Anja, you have the mic. Can I get it on?
So before we start, I just wanted to rephrase what Dr. G said. All of these people that we'll be talking about today have helped us so much, even if they're not wearing capes or flying from the side, they're still the heroes that line up our school. So today we'll be starting with Miss Woody, who's our food service. And these are quotes from some real students that we've collected, such as, "Miss Woody makes sure we eat healthy food, like fruits and veggies, not just ice cream." And another one, "Always says hi to me when I get to work." The other two won't be things people said necessarily, but these are very true. She volunteered to cook during COVID shutdown, so like people would pull up to the high school and she put the food at the back of the trunk. And then Miss Woody is getting me some small insurance something.
The second one we're going to talk about is Mrs. Norwood. Some students, the school said, "She always has a smile on her face. When I work with her, I have fun and learn math. She helps me in math and math stuff." And as a certified teacher, she has served a long-term teaching role multiple times to support teaching students. And she supports us on the daily too.
The next one is Miss Sneezy. She's an MTS interventionist. Miss Sneezy helps us if we need someone to talk to. And another student says, "Everyone loves her. Every day she joins us for lunch." These are all quotes of people saying, "She is safe to talk or to help. Miss Sneezy is always a positive." And honestly, I could go on and on about how because she's helped me in this year.
Next one, I have a, Sarah Hill Lopez. And, um... People have said, "Mr. Lopez brightens my day and puts a smile on my face. He interacts with students with his cool magic tricks during lunchtime." Very true. He is so kindly uplifting. He gives good advice. She wrote and was awarded an FHPS foundation grant for lunchtime journey circles. And Mr. Lopez serves as a member of the building's PIS committee.
The next one is Mrs. Lynn. She was my bus driver last year and she was a wonderful bus driver. I loved her. These are some quotes from a student at our school. "Best bus driver ever." Well, she is a kid. "She welcomes us and lets us be us." So they're practically saying they can do whatever they want without being hooked by God. "She cares about us on the bus and talks to students in a positive way. Mrs. Lynn provides an inclusive environment on her bus for all children of our wards."
The next one we're talking about is Mrs. Josephson. And Mrs. Jo is kind to everyone. "She is always there for you when you need her. And she is so calm, I can't thank her enough. She makes sure we believe in ourselves to convince she even math. And Mrs. Jo's smile lights up the whole room and makes me happy." Thank you.
Okay. This is Mr. Jeff Chadernan. He is a daytime custodian at our school. And he, um... He is known to have a very good talent when it comes to music and art. So what the student says, said was, "Always greets us as we come in the door." Another student says, "He teaches me painting techniques and lets us paint anything we want." Another student also says that he is so nice and cares for each of his students. Mr. Chadernan shares his passion for painting and students from diverse backgrounds to make new connections. Okay? It's a painting that I have made for you.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you.
It is a Japanese sakura forest. It took me eight days to paint. And it's supposed to be like a waterfall inside of this cherry blossom forest.
I like it. Great. I love it. Thank you.
So the back means, "Dear Mr. Chadernan, thank you for making my art look one hundred times better. You taught me how to make good art and made me learn many art things. I appreciate you." And from me. You're welcome. Mr. Chadernan, can we see it as well?
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Here's a waterfall and a beautiful cherry, cherry fruit. Okay. Anybody in the back? Oh, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
And I don't want to bring any embarrassment to Cecilia whatsoever, but as an ancient custodian, I think her grit is always with her artwork, which is absolutely amazing. But it was very important to her that she spoke to Jeff in this way tonight. And she was brave to come to the podium tonight, but she really wanted to encounter him in this way. Oh, that's really cool.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Can I, um, yeah, can I say something real quick? Because I had a chance to go to, um...
You painted when Mr. Jeff...
I painted. And I was, Jeff was an amazing teacher. I watched him interacting with students and he did a phenomenal job. But more importantly, his students were giving me all kinds of affirmations about being, being a good painter and really trying hard. So they were very appreciative of my attempt to do art with them. But I got to take home my bookmark, which I asked to do a bookmark because I like bookmarks in my books. And my seven-year-old granddaughter just could not believe that her grandmother actually made that dream. So thank you for your guidance. He does a great job.
Well, you can come back and do some Puerto Rican drumming now.
I can't wait.
And it's amazing because the rhythm just comes right through the nautilus of the building. Gives us all a skip on our beat, gives some of our friends a little extra rhythm outside of their body with a productive mission, thanks to Mr. Lopez now and his foundation and that gift. So just in everyone exercising their time, talent, treasure around the building. And really truly appreciation to Mrs. Davis too for letting us get a little creative with some of the hopes she supervises and some of the capacities they serve in the building too. So each of our support staff members playing a critical role on the bigger team. And obviously, to a safe school, students feel like they belong and just building that community forever. So quiet spaces, loud spaces, creative spaces, a little bit, um, being part of this school better. And we've got some of mine missing Huskies, so. Thank you. Could I have my hidden friends stop being hidden and rise so that the room can, um... And I guess I would just add, I'm, I don't know the count. I know the teacher count in the district, but I know that they are representative of so many hopes and their capacities throughout the district. So it's an honor to honor our support staff members and our transportation department and food service. And I did bring our secretaries, though I love my secretaries, but you all meet them at the front counter each day and they obviously serve in our faculty too. And thank you to our six brave young ladies. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I always love the instruction highlight, but I think this has got to be one of my favorite ones because as much as I enjoy seeing amazing lessons and things that people learn, it's really these people and the kids that are why we do all the lessons. So it's, thank you very much, Dr. Gutierrez, for highlighting some of the awesome heroes in the staff because they were just so important in this list.
We will take a brief recess here in case any of the members that are out in the audience would like a chance to leave before we get to the board.
Next, we have a presentation on a newly developed community budget guide in assistance for the finances for the office of the state.
Good evening, everyone. So this community budget guide has been months in the making and so we're very excited to be able to share the, uh, most of it this evening with you. Each of our members, you have a colored copy of the packet. So we're just going to spend just a couple minutes here going through the lie behind the budget guide and kind of maybe some highlights of what might be in it. So as we step back, we were thinking of how can we help educate our community on the basics of how the school district is funded and then how we spend our funds? It's a pretty complicated process on how we're funded, so we thought this was a good opportunity to share with them how that works. And then how do we spend our funds? You know, we often hear about spending funds in this area, that area, how much do you spend at the elementary level? How much do you spend at the middle school level? How much do you spend on some of these awesome staff that we just heard about this evening? So that's part of what is included in this budget guide. It contains both current and historical information for our community. And the goal is to publish this on an annual basis, so we'll be updating it each year. And then we'll make sure that we have it available on our website for our community. All right. So what are some of the things that are inside our community budget guide, or if you like, abradens, our CPG? Some examples include, we have a message from our superintendent as well as our board president and treasurer. It also contains some budget basics. Some of our revenue sources, you know, we've talked before and we've reviewed our budget and our budget amendment. Some of those revenue sources, whether they're coming from the state, from the federal government, or some of our local partners like our own foundation. We talk about our expenses and the different types of categories. You know, as a school district, we have to follow what's called the state accounting manual and how we classify expenditures. Sometimes some of those categories don't quite make sense. There's a category, for example, that's called central services. You might wonder, "What is central services?" And so this guide hopefully helps to explain a little bit of that. We have some comparisons to other districts. We like to do that. How do we trend some of our common parts, not only within our intermediate school districts, which includes twenty local schools? But we also compare ourselves to similar districts that are in the greater area on the east side of the state. It includes some trends. Where are we trending? Where have we been? How much are we spending in the classroom and instructional purposes? We talk about our community support, I mentioned just a second ago, about our local partner and our foundation. They're really important to us. Some are PTO booster groups, so there's some information on all of those community supports that we have. There's a section on our capital projects. So Dr. Gutierrez opened up and talked about this beautiful building and how it was supportive of that 2018 bond. We're also thankful for the support in our 2023 bond that was approved back in the summer. So our capital projects section, we'll talk about those and some of the projects that we have completed and then what's untapped. And then there's a glossary of terms. There is a lot of terminology that those of us who are inside the industry use all the time and those who are not, they don't know what we're talking about, right? And we just take that for granted. So hopefully this glossary of terms will help that as well. And one of the things that we're hoping to do after this first issue is really get some community feedback to know that what does the second issue look like? What are some other things that our community would like to know about the school district's budget? And we can hopefully add some of those things in the future issues. All right. So here are just a couple snippets. The next two slides, it's all I know, is two more, are just pages that I pulled out from the community guides. You can see our revenue sources for 2022, 2023. Yes, that was last year. We're using our audited financial information because we felt that was really important to the community. So these are actuals, again, that were audited by our audit firm, Man Hysterison. And then we like to view pictures too, so not only talking about it, but then showing a picture of that because sometimes that speaks a lot louder. Our expenditures, how much are we spending on elementary, middle, and high school and some other instruction, safety and security, transportation? So this is just gives our community an overall guide of how we're spending the money that we bring in every year. And then we spoke about like districts. So there's, here's one of the pages that's on comparing us to like districts. I know it's kind of hard to see here. It'll look better online, trust me. But just some comparisons on revenue with us and our common parts within the state and the school district, how we fare, as well as our common parts, our like districts, that most of them are on the east side of the state. how we fare, as well as our common parts, our like districts, that most of them are on the east side of the state. And the last image I put up here is just our community support. We talk about our community and their support of our capital projects, right? And the passing of our bonds since the inception of the district. You know, as we were packing up to come over here, I found this incredible document that I didn't know existed until I had to start going through things and packing. And it was really cool. So my goal is, it's like a, is to add new stuff to it because it was a history of bond proposals from the inception of Forest Hills Public Schools. So it was pretty neat, so I'll work on that. But longstanding support by our community for our capital projects that we do to make sure our buildings are in the best shape they can be for our students and their learning. And then, of course, we have a recognition village that was renewed a couple of years ago, our foundation and the current teacher organizations. So just a couple snippets of what you can expect to find in our community budget guide. And like I said, this is our first inaugural issue. And we hope to update that each year. And again, looking for feedback after we get this posted for our community because we want it to be a useful resource for them so they can understand, you know, some of the things that we have to do and I won't call it accounting jargon because there's not a lot of accounting jargon, but it's education accounting jargon. So it's important that our community understand how our money flows in and then how it's flowing out as well. Any questions?
No, but Julie, you and your team did a fantastic job. This is beautiful and really informative.
Thank you.
Things I already don't know, I see them here and that's great.
Yeah, I just, this is incredibly impressive. And I love a big chart, so I'll be good for a little while. And I really, I hope the community takes advantage of poring over this because this is a lot of information that if you're not in education on a regular basis, understanding where school money comes from and where it's allowed to go is really complicated. And it's just not like a normal household budget. So I think this is incredibly helpful and very informative and just really laid out so well.
And just from a historical perspective, we've done videos, we've done forums, we've done meetings, and it's so nice that it's all in one place and piecemeal, and it's always really available for people to look back at. So thank you for putting our work into this. It's great.
Can I ask how the community can get feedback?
Sure, that is a great question. I was thinking about it, I was thinking it. So when we post it online, we will put the information out there. I started without talking to Elizabeth first, is maybe we'll just list our content at HPS email address so that it could be, gets the right person.
Yeah, thank you. I know this was a ton of work on top of all the regular work you already do. One other question is, so you're planning on updating it each year? But I know we're in sort of a weird part of the year for this to be coming out. When would you typically expect to be updated?
Yeah, still kind of working through that. So this first time period, thanks, Dr. Fosson, this first time period might be a little bit more than 12 months because we want to find what that right cycle is. And it might be after we close our fiscal year. So that, you know, we saw the page where it showed our 2022, 2023 information there. You know, we want to kind of make sure that that's our audited so that people know what this.
So the first or the second one might be 18 months instead of the 12 month cycle. But we talked about that a lot. And really with the input of having the current data to be able to share, and that's important to us. And then also having it electronic allowed us to have all of the links to the different sites that we work off of, Mission Department of Education. And so we'll have a couple of hard copies in the building for people to peruse if they like. But mostly accessing it online will give them the ability to look at. When we talk about Bulletin 1014, and we use that term a lot when we're comparing numbers with districts around the state, you can click right on there and you can follow, and you can follow our Forest Hills Falls in comparison to the state. So you can see where we gather our information. So we really do think it's value added and hope that it'll help you as you try to explain the differences in our funding sources that are really important for our community to understand.
Thank you. I like these new microphones, but I hear this echo. We'll have to start to figure out how to either turn on the touch table in case that's it. Yeah. Okay, we are up to our consent grouping. Is there anything in the consent grouping that anybody would like to pull out for a separate consideration? Okay, and could I please have a motion to approve consent grouping 6A1 through 6D2?
I will motion that we approve consent grouping 6A1 through 6D2.
Second. Okay, and we will start with a curriculum report from Mrs. Frye.
Yeah, all right, I have a little bit of a lengthy report from tonight. We had a great meeting last week. Our instructional highlight for last meeting was, was a kind of like a presentation from our three school resource officers or our SROs, as we often refer to them. And then just the different jobs that they carry out throughout the district. So just a reminder that we have three of them, one designated for each attendance zone. So we have Jim Savoda from Central, we have Corey, is it Saika? I have, this is a new name for us in Eastern.
China.
What? Everyone's saying it different. From Eastern and Vanda back at Northern. And so our SROs carry out a wide variety of activities for our schools. So they went through all of the different things that they do for each of our schools. And just a few highlights of things that they do because to have a comprehensive list of everything that they do for our kids and our schools and our teachers and our staff would be pages long. So they engage in teaching, education, mentoring. One example that was given was, to Vanda give an example that he's worked with classes, educating students on car insurance and how that works and what students should do if they are pulled over. What information should they be giving to law enforcement? What should they do in the case of an accident? Who should they call? How does that work? Just kind of like the basics of being a responsible driver. They also engage in forensic interviewing, crisis intervention training for staff. Additionally, all of the day-to-day tasks like helping with traffic at the schools and parking lots and running drills and security meetings. They build relationships with kids. They help schools with pruency issues. They investigate any on-campus illegal activity. They do class presentations like I just mentioned. They provide security at major events like prom and homecoming and major sporting events or other events that are being held at the school or school adjacent. They also will assist the county PD when a student is involved in an accident or incident outside of school hours by letting the school know what's going on if they think it might impact school. I do know that a lot of our high school students, especially because that is where our SROs spend a lot of their day, they have great relationships with those SROs on their campus. And they look at them as another adult in the building who will help them, show interest in them, which we know is an invaluable asset to any school district. Just another adult that kids can feel is in their corner. So we are very appreciative of all the extra hours these officers put in to keep our students safe and to help out our families. And they do definitely put in lots of extra hours above and beyond just the school day. All right, so in terms of curricular resources, we have a few to approve. And one thing I wanted to mention for a lot of these items is that they are being paid for with grant funding and are remaining extra money. The instruction office took on a tremendous workload by applying for a new literacy grant called 35J, is what we'll refer to it as. And they were awarded that grant. It was a lot of work to apply for it. And it provides the district with an incredible amount of money to purchase literacy materials at the K5 level. This literacy grant requires that all K5 teachers receive additional literacy PD and curriculum support. So for tonight, our list, and just reminding everyone, there's about a 100-page attachment to our meeting minutes from last Wednesday where you can read in-depth all the information about each of these resources, where they're going to be used, where they're coming from, everything that you need to know. So the first thing is jump rope readers for K3 to be used in our summer school programs. There are series of nonfiction books for kids to learn early research skills and experience with informational tax, which is a crucial skill for any of our assessments that we give. So that is SRO dollars, I hope I can get that right. Handwriting without tears for grades K2, that is exactly what it sounds like. Hopefully. And it's paid for with that 35J literacy grant that I just mentioned. Also decodable books for grades K5 from a variety of different vendors, also from that 35J group. And if you look at the attachment from our meeting last week, there are many, many pages that detail which vendors all those different books are coming from. Also, a new program Trails Tool Wellness that will support our PBIS in our schools and behavior in our buildings at the tier one level. These are lessons that focus on character traits like self-awareness, self-management, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. 25 lessons for each grade band that teachers and guidance counselors can decide how they implement. This also includes family resources to be sent home at the beginning of each unit. It's incredibly well organized for teachers to implement. Everything they need to print off is there for them. This is a free resource for us from the state of Michigan. And we will be joining about 700 other schools in Michigan who use this. And then to review from last month that we are voting on to approve tonight for our foreign language classes, we have head puzzle, Bebalingua, Kindergarten, and a program called Talk Broad. And those, just as a reminder for you, are giving teachers a variety of lessons, formative assessments, supplemental review for Spanish, cultural videos, quizzes, grammar and vocab practice for our foreign language classes, and then real conversations with native speakers that our immersion students can also use to practice those language skills. And then lastly, going up for a monthly review, we have two resources. One is a resource for our MLL students, so it's a multi-language learner, called English 3D and Read 180. These resources are aligned with the LITA test that all our MLL students take annually. And it provides tier construction and a hard copy book and tutorial for all of our students. And then the last one going up for review is from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. The abbreviation for this is UFLI. And that provides tier two support in areas like phonetic awareness and also science of reading. So again, those early literacy skills.
Thank you very much. Does it leave any questions for Mrs. Frye? All right, then we will move on to Dr. Michelle for final support.
Okay, we have a busy month as well. At the end of April, so you have 83% of the way through the school fiscal year, 69% of the way through the school year. We reviewed monthly financial statements that were in our packet. Nothing notable to draw our attention to, all tracking as expected. We had a good bond construction update and a couple of highlights. Central Middle School is complete in its original scope. That additional front entrance that we discussed separately is to come net this summer. But that's incredible space. We saw some pictures of kids thoroughly enjoying what has been done over there. Ate Vista is about 50% complete. Pine Ridge is 40-ish percent complete, tracking as expected. The Eastern Middle School entrance starts this month, the middle school entrance off of Knapp. And as a note, that parking lot that plans to be closed June, July and August in the summer for that work to hopefully conclude before school back in session. So that's at the beginning, and then that whole lot will be down for the summer to complete that work. We also got an update on our 2023 work, which is well underway. The athletic fields that we've talked about and seen, those are out to bid. And we, the expectations, we'll have something to review or addition next month to award that work. Much has been happening on the aquatics center front as well. Dr. Fosson and I accompanied a handful of people from the district, coaches, athletic directors and others, along with the architecture teams and others on a tour to see a couple of other districts and community pools. Fascinating and amazing some of the things that are in those. And I think a lot of good idea generation came from that. So that's in the design phase. Central High School is the next piece of this as well, after the athletic piece. And that's in the design phase as already to the architect firm already is meeting with staff and teachers at school, trying to reimagine these spaces, figure out what people need, what people want, how we can do things differently as we embark on that next large project. So that's in process. And a few other things kind of bond at large. The Bond Facilities team is being created, something formal that we haven't had previously. A group of the architects, construction managers, staff, other district folks, probably one or two of us presumably as well, to just sort of follow this work longitudinally and look at what's ahead and look at where we are in our current projects, just so we can really have this template out and be very aware of the phases we're in on all of these projects. We're supposed to hand in hand with the website as well. We talked about a website for this 2023 bond, the next 10 years to scope all of this out. The district is also looking at kind of re-website development across through the whole district as well. So playing that game of not trying to create something brand new just to tear it all apart when the broader website gets redone. But that is forthcoming as well so that everybody in the community can see where we are and what our spending plans are and all these details around all these amazing projects related to the 2023 bond. We then also discussed this Section 35J grant. And we'll, with the components that is trying and mentioned in there, you'll actually hear a number of grants that we have, the district has worked really hard to apply for and have awarded. That again, as a reminder, helped to take the burden off of our general fund for these instructional materials, these safety materials, all these things that would otherwise come from our bucket that we need to pay people and wages and have all these amazing support staff in our classrooms and schools. So a big thank you, you'll hear about these different grants that we've got that are being used to fund some of these things this month. And our final discussion item, bond refunding. We remember we gave the district the ability to go kind of track the bond market and see if it was opportune time to refund some of our prior bond series. And they were able to take advantage of that with a dip, kind of transient dip in interest rates. That was able to refund the 2014 bond series. We didn't have to issue any new bonds to allow that all to happen. We will again, probably next month, see documents to finalize that sale. But the refinance allows us to pay off those 2014 bonds in 2025 instead of projecting 2029, which comes with a gross savings of about $890,000 overall to taxpayers and communities. So again, astute work there, as always, making sure we're keeping on top of those bond repayments. We bring this to our action items, and there's a little bit of a list. A number of curriculum materials that were mentioned. These jump rope decodable books, fiction and nonfiction, amount not to exceed $242,730. That's the SO3 formula that was mentioned. The other jump rope decodables for the summer school program are for an amount not to exceed $55,200. That's split the PMAS SO3 formula and equalization funds over those different pools. And the handwriting without tiers book or books is for an amount not to exceed $46,000 from that Section 35J grant. Non-curricular materials include Ate Vista cafeteria furniture. It's part of the renovation process happening over there. Two purchasing co-op reviews. The recommendation is to purchase from custom workplace interiors for an amount not to exceed $37,560 out of our 2021 capital projects fund. The next is a furniture increase. Back in March, we approved a sizable purchase to outfit 86 different rooms in eight buildings with new furniture as we have been doing as the construction goes through. One of the vendors forgot to quote us for the installation cost on the quote. So the original $2,090,000 rough package that we already approved, we need to add about $7,000 more to that large number for a total of $2,016,905. And we already approved about 99% of that, so this is the extra $7,000 for that oversight. The next item is the Orchard View Media Center shelving. During this renovation, the decision was made to try and salvage that to reduce costs from the old library or media center into the new. And we're somewhat reaping the benefits of that now. It's starting to bow and break and they're running into more failures than is necessary. So this is to purchase the new shelving units for the media center at Orchard View. Omni purchasing co-op, the recommendation is to buy from DUL Corporation for an amount not to exceed $36,300. Again, of 2021 capital projects. Next is an annual item. Next is an annual item for our waste and recycling across the district. This was last bid three years ago, and we have contracted with Waste Management for the last three years for this service. We sent back out to bid again and again out of three vendors that responded, Waste Management worked a little bit again. So recommending that they be awarded the next three-year contract for an amount not to exceed two hundred twelve thousand fifty-three dollars. Any sense? Next is new A V equipment for a couple of buildings and across the district. A lot of the projector type equipment is near the end of its life cycle across the district. This year, a number of those interactive flat panels were highlighted across the district with thumbs up largely. So this actually is to afford to outfit a couple of classrooms at Edvista, Pine Ridge, and the Transition Center, where new construction is happening with some new audio microphone type equipment for use there. And then to provide some of these flat panels in this building, the Fine Arts Center, and then two per school across the district to kind of take the next phase in the pilot, so they can expand it more. We just got a handful of them in the district now, but that every school can play with them. There's a lot of cool advantages to them and all of that is detailed in the packet. So the recommendation is for Boom Technology for the classroom audio stuff, and then a group called Data Image for the I P's. Plang Rand reviewed all of this and recommended that their approvals on our way as well in our packet. This for an amount not to exceed four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars out of twenty twenty-one capital projects. Next is an upgrade to Google Plus. This would be for the first year of a three-year agreement with Google. We have used Google Workplace and Education Fundamentals, the free license since twenty twelve, and this would be upgrading us to the Plus package that has a number of things again that were in our packets in terms of advantages. Advanced threat detection, being able to identify and respond to threats more proactively, data protection, additional cloud storage, premium classroom tools like Google Meet Premium, higher degrees of support, and more. So this contract would go through June twenty twenty-seven for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. This would also allow us to discontinue our Zoom subscription because we'll have the premium Google Meet, which is very comparable. That's about twenty-seven thousand dollars that we spent in Zoom, so that's savings by doing this move to Google Plus. Next, surveillance cameras. You remember late last summer, also a year ago, we added and replaced a couple hundred cameras across the district after walkthroughs. That came from Capital Projects. We have additional grants, a section ninety-seven grant, similar to the literacy grant, but this grant focuses specifically on safety and security in our district. And these funds are ones that we have been looking for best places to use by September of this year. So on the list of things, an additional, this asks for an additional either new or upgraded fifty-eight cameras that touch every building in the district again. So the recommendation is to purchase a Vigilon video surveillance equipment, which is cameras, mounts, licenses, storage from people-driven technology. An amount not to exceed two hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred dollars out of this section ninety-seven grant. Next is new athletic training carts. These are the mobile carts, there's one in each high school, three that do all the things you would expect, going down to football games and outdoor events and having our athletic training groups and all their equipment and materials in there. Those carts are from two thousand four, two thousand five. I was probably taped up with these carts, is my guess. And they've been in all seasons and all weather since that time, so if we went through, they're due for replacement. Omni emerging co-op from a group called Labs, and the cost of all three is thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, twenty twenty-one capital projects. The next is a resolution that we adopt annually for the Kent I S D general fund budget. Initiative law, as we know, requires that the I S D submits their budgets to local school districts for review and then a resolution of approval or disapproval. We were, that was the bulk of our packet, if you read through that, a big sixty pages or so of all of the I S D's plans for their finances next year. This again is just for the general fund, they have multiple just like we do. We reviewed again in detail at our meeting, and the general fund, the district is also reviewed, passes our inspection essentially, passes the district's inspection. There were a few things they noticed in other funds that said that it will worth discussing with the I S D that's happening. But again, this resolution tonight is just to approve the general fund, which didn't seem to have any major outliers or items of concern, but that's part of this. Next is to renew our audit service group, which is Manica Sterson. We have been with them for a long time, we heard that mentioned earlier, to use them for our financial audits for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. They, we know have extensive school district experience, especially in medium, large-size districts like ours. We've got a great working relationship with them, they do a great job. So this is an annual thing for us, amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. This is out of our general fund. And finally, just two property tax reimbursements, nine thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and four cents to A T ownership, and nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars fifty-seven cents to CASC. And that's all.
That's all?
This week.
That's a handful. All right, thank you very much for that. Is there any further discussion on any of the items that Dr. Michelle or Mrs. Frye brought up? Okay, then can we turn a little call please? Dr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? And Mrs. DeBor? Uh, Mrs. Ma?
Yes.
Mrs. Koda?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tyne S. Thank you. Next is the Kent Intermediate Association of School Boards has three openings on their Board of Directors. And typically, these get put on at the annual dinner that they have, which was, should have been back in April, but they had to cancel it. So because they had to cancel that, they just asked all of the individual boards to go and vote at their committee meeting for that, which we're typically going to take care of somewhere else. So we are just looking to, they are looking to fill those three cabinets for three seats. So could I please have a motion to vote for Christie Ramsey Rockford Region One, Terrace Ramirez Northview Region One, and Ken Tornecker Godwin Heights Region One for the Kent Intermediate Association of School Boards Board of Directors?
So moved. That's advice.
That does advise, thank you. Second. All right, is there any further discussion on the Board of Directors? Okay, can we do a quick roll call of that? Dr. Michelle?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. DeBor?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Mrs. Ma?
Yes.
Mrs. Koda?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Trynges?
And just as a point of clarification, we are not allowed to abstain from votes. So I, it's part of our bylaws that our policies is that we, as board members, it's part of our job, our job is to vote on things that come out, and so we're not allowed to abstain.
We can abstain if there's a conflict.
If there's a conflict, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is a reminder for comment cards. This is sort of your last call. If there's anything that you would like to speak about at public comment, please go ahead and fill out those cards, and then we pick up after the super ten report, which I will now turn it over to Dr. Shumoliata. Informational items and super ten report, I don't know if we divvy them up or roll them all together.
It's all the same.
Okay.
Dr. G, thank you for being here. I'm sure you realize you have eleven days with students, right? Last week, we celebrated the graduating seniors from Central, Northern, and Eastern High Schools. With commencement ceremonies at Cal State University on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, they could tell the board. I know that by the time we get down to Wednesday night, we all brought our safety pins, so we knew how to put everything on our probes, and we were there on time, and everybody was relaxed. So it was great, it was a wonderful experience for me to have three high school, three graduations, and to really, it was definitely a joyous occasion for our graduates and their families. I loved how each high school had a slightly different approach to their ceremony, acknowledging their building culture. So I really appreciated that. However, as we celebrate our graduates, you know, it was also time to celebrate and reflect on our teachers' leadership and the hard work and guiding our students learning from kindergarten through senior year. So I really appreciated that the high school staff was there to celebrate with their students that were exiting their building. But I never lose sight of the fact that this is a K twelve endeavor. You know, we have students that congratulate, but that's because we have elementary teachers that have worked really hard to form the foundation for them to be successful when we get to high school. And middle school students, teachers absolutely played an incredible role in guiding those students during that time period. So I want to acknowledge that it's not just a celebration of our high school staff, but it's really a collective effort to get our students to graduate. So congratulations to our staff on a wonderful three graduation ceremony. Really enjoyed those. And yes, my hand hurt after three nights of shaking hands, but really celebrating with the students, I loved it. And then the last day of school for all of our students is Wednesday, June fourth. And the year has flown by quickly, and we're looking forward to a school event. And I know all of the staff in the room right now are also thinking the same thing. They just want a really nice new end to the school year, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up is board communications. Does anyone have any board communications?
I do. The actually, Community Council met last month, we had an open meeting with parents to discuss the sort of practices in general and in our school district. And while we only had two, an hour and a half or two hours, and really the sort of practices, it's two days between me. It was a really good introduction to what I am of a Catholic dinner district. So that was a great discussion, and then we are looking forward to meetings next year and continuing to bring these kind of topics to our parents.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention that I went to the twenty-fifth birthday party for Goodwillly a couple weeks ago. And I don't, I, it was a tremendous turnout from not just our community, but people all over that have experienced Goodwillly. I heard people flew in to celebrate this occasion. They had hundreds of people there. It was just a really cool testament to how deeply that environment impacts students, not just when they're there, but for years and years and years. They had a lot of their artists and residences there that often work with our Goodwillly students. They had just so many of the people who have worked in the building through the years come out and they just kind of like ever just say, they love being part of the building. And so I just, it was a really fun event and it really great to celebrate something that is definitely just a really a crown jewel in our district. So I really commend those teachers and everyone who works out there for putting on an amazing show.
I can't help but add, because as you mentioned, people flew in for this, that one of my daughter's best friends from Goodwillly flew in just for the weekend from Switzerland for that event. So I mean, that was very important to her and to many who came to that event.
Well, then you get to keep that in mind, Meg, it almost flew from Africa as well, but we're going to go ahead and check against that.
One thing I would like to note is something that's upcoming. At Forest Hills Central, the high schoolers in the honors English ten class, one of their assignments is to do TED Talks. And most of the kids do them just for another grade or two within the school and do it. But for some of them, they, they applied to do their TED Talk for the community in a thing called F H C Inspires. And that is coming up the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which I believe is May twenty eighth. It's here at the Fine Arts Center, and there's going to be about thirty kids from Forest Hills Central that give just absolutely amazing and inspirational TED-like talk speeches. So if you have the opportunity to come and check it out, it's, it's really fantastic to see what these kids have to say.
All right. And we will move on now to our public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address and leave your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. Per established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Up first is Even McQueen.
Good evening. My name is Evan, and I'm a student from Central Hills. My classmates and I would like to explain a problem that we've seen not only in our school, but that affects students everywhere. We noticed, we noticed that students at schools, that parents and guardians sign up as early as forty-five minutes before school dismissed. During this time, they are idling, idling their cars. And the cause of, the cause made causes, and that causes air pollution. After much research and problem solving, our classes worked with Marshall Kohler from MEAC and Representative Hood to write a bill that is now with lawyers, lawyers in Lansing. We are asking the Forest Hills Public Schools to take action against idling, idling cars before this, before this becomes a bill. My classmates, Landon, Alex, and Osi will give more information.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Bennett, I'm a student from Central Hills. As Evan told you, air pollution is a big problem that affects students everywhere. The basic community should not be contributing to a vulnerable household. The basic community, when cars are idling, they may leak into the air, including from the outside, water access, hydrocarbons, access from the outside, methane, and renewable energy. Control speed of the clean air, a seventy-eight percent oxygen and twenty-eight percent oxygen combustion. As you all know, children's exposure to elevated levels of pollutants, they have increased risk of broken asthma, respiratory problems, and other adverse health effects. And losing a brief course of living time can dramatically reduce these prevalence of pollutants in children's exposure. Children are more sensitive to air pollution because maybe fifty percent more air pollution than adults. Alex and I will are counting on the class.
Alex Allington.
Hello, my name is Alex Allington, and I too am from Central Hills. After we found out that a huge problem of air pollution can lead to children, we monitored our own parking lot. We are very pleased to inform that our buses do not idle. Our drivers turn off their engines and park and start again when they are ready to go. And they're not adding to the pollution or the monitoring risk. Our class conducted an investigation to track the number of cars and trucks that were idling on any given school there. Our investigation happened in the winter, but the weather varied from a little chilly to a very nice warm day. We found that there was no correlation between weather and the number of cars idling. We cars idling with the sun and the top, and the top-down on their vehicle, so weather wasn't a factor. We went out to our pickup line for four straight days, encountered the number of vehicles that were idling versus not idling. We found that we easily had thirty to fifty cars per day that were at school twenty minutes or more before the end of the day. The average cars idling was seventy-five percent. One car idling for just fifteen minutes has wasted point zero eight gallons of gasoline. That doesn't seem like much, but if they idle for fifteen minutes every day of the year, that's twenty-nine gallons of gasoline in one year. At a price of three dollars and fifty cents per gallon, that's a hundred two dollars spent in gasoline to get you nowhere. We decided, we decided to do some math to figure out just how much money is being wasted in our parking lot. We found out that it totaled to five, no, no, nine thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars being wasted beyond nowhere. We would ask people to donate that money to schools if they want, couldn't that be nice? Now, Osi is going to tell you about what he did and how he can help. Now OC is going to tell you about what he did and how he can help.
Thank you. In the meeting, my name is Osianna and I am asking our school board to serve also before our builders pass. We believe that Forest Hills should care about the environment and the air that schools breathe. Did you know that this year, actually just last one, the Grand Rapids metro area was named one of the 25 worst cities in the nation for ozone pollution? According to the American Clean Association 2024 State of the Air Report, which was released on April 4, area governments also received very great for both ozone and annual particle pollution. It was just it's like this that caused us to work with Marshall Cooper and Representative Hood on our no-idling bill. Our bill will require school boards and intermediate school districts to establish anti-idling plans, including community education enforcement. Districts will be required to report on actions and outcomes to the MDP or Michigan Department of Education. We would like to see our districts establish our schools as a no-idling zone prior to the approval of this bill. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Vincent Monarch. Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Vincent, I missed one more student. I apologize. Alexandra Ward. Oh, okay, as I say, it's my students, so.
Vincent Monarch, you will find me at 6860 Cascade Road. And this speech represents my views only and not any affiliated organization. Last board meeting, I raised concerns on the lack of transparency regarding the sexual predator caught unemployed in the Norton School District. I had personally, after that search, been checked with other district parents from the elementary through high school level. As I had found no communication from the board or the administration to the parents in the last month, I am here to state the answers Kristi Neese provided me by board follow-up meeting. Question number one, was the process law completed regarding hiring practices to see how this person slipped through and was hired? Answer, we confirmed that we had followed our hiring practices. The individual had no criminal record and the previous employer reported he had no unprofessional conduct on his record. Number two, what changes will be made to the hiring process to help us pick up predators in the future? Answer, it would not be appropriate to share additional measures that would allow any prospective employees who are predators to circumvent the system. And I will say from a parental standpoint, that's a relatively reasonable response. But fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. So I truly hope that your new measures will be successful. Number three, what was the result of the North Point Security sweep and what changes will be made to eliminate any detective vulnerabilities? Answer, North Point Security did not uncover any cameras, led by our Director of Safety and Security. Additional cameras are being placed to enhance our ability to monitor. Question four, as of the last communication, now over two months ago, the predator was placed on administrative leave. Are there plans to terminate its employment? Answer, the individual employee was terminated with an effective date of March 20, 2024. Ms. Neese then wrote in an email, quote, "Since the district's last communication to the parents, there have been no additional information to share with the parents. What follow-up would you have liked us to communicate?" I disagree with her assessment because my questions have uncovered what has happened to the predator, whether the district bothered to do a process law, and what tangible changes will be made to the schools. And that is closure. We, the parents and families, would expect at a bare minimum closure for the knowledge that the matter was taken seriously by the district when a sexual predator came very close to harming our children. And that should come from you. I shouldn't be the one breaking this news at a school board meeting. If you care about the families of the district, please do the humane thing, publicly put in closure to dangerous issues that affect our children. Tell us what happened to the perpetrator and what you plan to do to prevent or at least stop dangerous threats like this in the future. And please, do so unprompted and not make us a concerned parent held you at transparency. Good day.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of my child. He attends Tornapple Elementary. We learn as parents and are very concerned about the classroom size increase going from about 21, 22 children per classroom to 29 for the next school year. We worry that this size of classroom will not allow teachers to get enough, give enough attention to each child. And based on the research that I did, ideal class size for the elementary school is about 18 students per child. So going to 29 children in a classroom will be detrimental, not only to children, but also teachers. Children in Tornapple don't already get homework for the first four grades, including kindergarten, which I know from other school districts, it's unheard of. So in comparison to other school districts, with the homework and the student-to-teacher ratio being higher, it's also higher than national average, which is 15.4 that was published for the year 2021. We worry as parents that the education will plummet. This is a very good school district and we moved here for the school. And now going to 29 children, we worry that the kids can get the education that they deserve and that we pay for in our taxes. So I want to know, I would like to get a follow-up. How do you ensure that students in this district do not fall behind? How do you compare to other school districts or other schools within this, within this school district, other elementary schools, with the teacher, with the students-to-teacher ratio? And what is the reason for such a dramatic increase in number of students in classroom? Thank you.
Robin Vanderjech.
Good evening, board members. Robin Vanderjech, Cascade Township. Tonight, I'm here to publicly request that each individual board member express to me via email your personal thoughts on why the book Push, a book detailing explicit sexual atrocities which are perpetrated by adults upon children, including those in diapers, and why it's considered appropriate to expose our young teen minds to its content via our school library shelves. I have left you my contact email and the comment card. And I want to make clear that I'm not looking to receive an opinion piece by an attorney from the law or from the M E A or the A L A. They're all entitled to their opinions, but what I'm interested in are your individual thoughts and opinions as you are the ones who were elected to put the interests of our youth first and to represent us and our community's standards in protecting and keeping our children safe. It seems that even in investigations by the FBI and the resulting unrest of the Forest Hills public school employees slash pedophile has not prompted a review of this book's content as of yet. I would appreciate your individual responses within the next few weeks and before the final school board meeting of the school year. Thank you in advance for your thoughtfulness and consideration regarding this very disturbing topic.
At this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all of those requests today. At this time, are there any other specific support? Hearing none, you may as a her, thank you.